Good morning, everyone. This morning, we're blessed to have Reverend Ken Walker from Trinity United Methodist Church to lead us into prayer, and Vice President Delia will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Gracious God, we are grateful to be here today and to be able to be in service to our citizens of our county. I pray for this county council and each of the council persons that you will be with them today, whatever decisions they make, whatever questions they ask, and whatever answers they seek. We also pray for those who are outside the doors and lying to vote. We pray that that goes smoothly, that there be no hatred or anger shown, and that people will wait as good citizens. We ask your blessing on all of us, oh God, in Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order any items from the public.
I just wanted to take a moment to update you on numbers so far and to get some guidance from you when it comes to Candace, which happens the Monday after the election, so we can plan appropriately in a way that's going to be most convenient for you. Just on the numbers, absentee ballot application cutoff window was midnight last night. We've had 10,144 absentee ballots requested, 7,522 have been cast and returned. The poll crews that are downstairs processing those are right on top of it. They've processed everything that came in up until about noon yesterday, so we'll have a good absentee count on election night. There's been 7,447 early voters as of the close of the voting yesterday. There's probably another 7,500 out in the hallway right now.
Seventy-four forty-seven.
Seventy-four forty, 7,447. Now, if you add the absentee ballots, return, and the early votes, we've had more early votes cast already at this point than at the end of early voting than any previous presidential election. So we have the rest of today and two more days of early voting. Those numbers are going to go by another 3,000 or more by the end of...
So we're going to probably about 18,000, you think? Total?
Well, with early voting, we think it's going to be around 13,000 to 14,000. Excuse me, you're right, 18,000.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then there's 80,000 registered?
Maybe 3,000 registered.
Right. So that's already, that's already about 20, 20 to 25 percent. That's a good turnout already, just in early voting.
It's a tremendous turnout. It's...
Probably going to be in the 40 percent range at least.
And every polling place will be open, adequately staffed. We don't expect any subjective lines of polling places on election day, and the weather forecast right now is looking decent. It will still look decent for election day.
When, when you request an absentee ballot, it's recorded that you requested one?
Reported. Your, your request is processed, signatures compared, so that we know that you're eligible to receive one.
And then if you don't vote, absentee?
You have to turn an absentee ballot in when you go to cast your vote at a polling place, or you won't be able to vote.
Well, you'll be able to vote provisional. We'll, we'll allow people to vote. We'll remark it as provisional, so that when it comes before you for Candace, we know it's the absentee ballot.
Okay, because I, okay. And I got another question for you. I got some people asking, I mean, I know that about, every ballot is posted in the newspaper. Can they get a ballot in their precinct somewhere other than that paper?
Yes, we have sample ballots downstairs, and they can, they can come in. They don't have to stand in line. We have given a sample ballot. At the polling places, sample ballots are available and posted.
Okay, fine. Thanks.
So it's going well. We have 18 volunteers down there today staffing the early voting, doing the ballot scanning, and preparing the last minute ballots that we'll receive overnight before midnight last night, and that...
You have rotating a volunteer, rotation of volunteers for sure, right? Or are they all about the same?
So we, we rotate where we can. For early voting, we ask people to try to commit to all 10 days.
For sure.
Because there's, there's a certain skill level you get after the first couple of days that allows us to keep things moving. So most people that are doing the early voting work have, have been there the entire time.
So that's 12-hour days?
12-hour days, 10 days, and some, we give them Sunday off. We're pretty generous.
Yeah.
And...
Check the lay.
But because of that experience and, and the way that they're, they're processing, we're running a voter through every 25 seconds. So keeping the lines moving the best we can. The other thing I wanted to get guidance from you, if I may, we have Candace beginning on Monday at 9:00. And we were going to propose to you, if this works for you, that we, the board, Candace' work begins Monday morning. We do the random draw for precincts, we'll hand count two precincts, and we make decisions on which provisional should be counted, then potentially adjourn until the next day to allow your election staff to do the preparations and have everything ready to go the next day to speed the hand counting process. We're going to be a little more thorough with the hand count this time. We're going to bring in several teams of people to do that hand count, so that you're not waiting as long as possible.
Are you going to, you can count in every precinct?
So we're going to count two precincts. COVID requires...
Monday.
Yes. And so on Monday, we'll determine those two precincts. All the materials are sealed boxes downstairs, but we'll gather those together. We'll process the absentee, or excuse me, the provisional ballots that determine should be counted. We'll make that determination Monday morning. And we think that will speed the process. I think it's coming in two days. We're going to do the work in your chambers rather than downstairs, but we think that might be the most efficient way, if you're willing, and you think it's going to work for your schedules.
Okay, so you'll need tables up here set up?
We'll have tables set up. We're going to try to get about six to eight people up here to process it. Part of this hand count process will be enrolling a few of the paper audit trails.
Right.
Those numbers, and that can be in perfect numbers and process, so we won't have as many people doing that as we can manage.
I'm sure you'll get Penny and Joe accommodate you.
Right. Thank you all for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Darrell, before you leave, how much time on Monday?
I think that process might take an hour and three or four when two people. I would, I would estimate three to four hours on Tuesday.
So an hour of your time on Monday and maybe four hours on Tuesday.
All right.
And don't hold me to that. Subjects change.
We understand, yes.
Nine AM Thursday.
We're here to accommodate Mr. Short.
What day are we talking about?
Monday, Tuesday, and nine at 10:00.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you. Thank you, Darrell. Everybody's doing a wonderful job, by the way.
Do you have a chance to thank some?
And, and what a, what a great election to break, yeah.
I'm going to write a career advice column, and the first paragraph is going to be, "Don't cancel elections directly in August for the presidential public election."
Hey Doug, break him in or break him up.
Oh, yeah, dude. Well, you just started right to the walls, right?
Yeah.
All right, anybody else?
Got to drink from a fire hose, didn't you?
Five minutes fire hose. Any, anybody else from, items from the public? Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, October the 29th, 2020, if there's no modifications or changes.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, I just want to point out, we know that some of the outside agencies are in need of cash flow, so some of the smaller agencies, rather than pay them out quarterly, we're giving them their annual allocation as it comes due.
Can you give us a spreadsheet on, on how that's being done till we see it? Yeah. I like the idea. I like the idea. I'm not so sure. I might want to build on what you're doing.
Okay.
Right, and it doesn't push the problem later on in the year, same problem.
Well, it does, but it depends on, it depends on, sometimes you need bridge money.
I get, I get, but it...
But it does push the problem on down the road if COVID doesn't clear up.
Right.
But if it clears up, then it's bridge money.
I get you.
And we're talking about the $500 allocations, the $1,200...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I seen a policy of theater, 1,500 bucks, and, you know, that was more than a quarter.
We have not done that with library services.
Right. But I mean, I do like the, the theory, the big, and, and, yeah, as long as, as long as it's being treated as, as a forward payment, and we're hoping that, you know, this will be cleared up, and we're not digging anybody in the hole, is what Mr. WDA says. Internal budget revision, any internal budget revisions? Mr. Davis, see none? All right. Change in status, we have a new hire recommendation received from Allen Davis County Administrator for Will Lawrenson. J.D. has a fiduciary supervisor with an annual salary of $60,000 effective November the 2nd, 2020, and that's still in a vacancy that's going to be left by Ms. Petry.
Well, she was last day disposed, she given her notice effective tomorrow. I met with her, Jan, post, it moved case last week, who's one of the senior members down there. And that has agreed to work till the next Friday, so she's going to give us an addition to this work of training, or divisional weeks worth of time to the team.
We have minutes for October 15, 2020. Everyone was present. Do they meet your criteria? Make sure Penny here is not calling out here. County Council calendars. We'll be at the airport for our legislative session. Mr. Davis or Mr. Delia, one of you, all you want to talk about, anything update on what we're meeting out there?
Actually, we're waiting on, we're waiting on Nick to get back to us. He's looking to try to find out. I spoke with him 15 minutes ago or so, and he, he said he had a couple options, but he would need some help. I told him that he'll send us a message and let me know. He's going to text me so we can figure out where. But he'll probably need some, some of our staff to go out there and give him the help moving some tables and stuff.
We're going to move a little bit, honey, because of the amount of people, and we'll make sure we have a big enough meeting area to do that, to meet the criteria.
I told him I thought it was going to need to be about 50 percent larger than the conference room out there, so he's trying to figure out which rooms will work.
At least. All right. I guess we're also...
How many people responded?
Plus us.
Yeah, and I went off that figuring that we'd probably be all right with 20 out there in that.
Well, for six feet in separation, a room this size would work. For six foot separation, a room this size would work.
Well, it's either or. So if you're going to wear the mask, I guess you wouldn't have to have the six foot separation, right?
Right. And that's another option we could do. I was thinking about those, you know, the ones that speak and take your mask off, the ones that not keep covered up.
Right.
All right, so boards and commissions. Have done tonight, and we have on Monday the 2nd, 6:00 PM planning commission. Election day will be Tuesday. Still have sewer district in Stonewall. They're still meeting on Tuesday, you think? Right now, I guess they are. Wednesday, the 4th, at 1:00 PM, would be historical landmarks at 4:00 PM Telomar. Any changes for next week? We have an order to establish Fund 038, County Improvements, a special revenue fund, and we also have an order to establish a Fund 100 Recovery Service Special Revenue Fund. Any questions on that? I did stop down to Recovery Resource Center and talked to Stephanie, and they said that the Quick Response Team is doing wonderful work. They've already went out to nine different people.
They have.
And have talked to each and every one of them, and two of them has searched out recovery services.
And very official results.
Mm-hmm.
How many on the team do I have?
Three, four, five. Case manager, team leader, and...
Wow, 20 percent is really a good start.
Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, she, you could just, you can just see the happiness in her face.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just another real quick advert for the county's attention. It really doesn't fit in anywhere, but in case, but in case you would get a call, we received notification from the executive director of the First County Public Service Order District that on the evening, actually the night of Monday night, the 2nd, but the ring they give Tuesday, the 3rd, they will be doing work. they will be doing work on water connections at Route Fifty-One, Middleway Pike, near Whispering Pine Road. It will be done during the night, but should be completed by five A.M. But they will be shutting off water service for approximately three hundred customers.
When is this coming, babe?
Uh, Monday night, this coming Monday night, November second, with the rain day of Tuesday night, November third.
They do realize the next day is election day.
They will be, it will be off through about five A.M.
They've always had trouble in that area with water pressure.
Mm-hmm.
I think they knew they notified all the affected customers, but he wanted them to elect council those in case.
Well, the only reason it concerns me, maybe I should express their concern, or concerns is, you know, I'm sure it may affect some of our precincts. Maybe, maybe not. But the effects of precinct in there, if any turn out like there has been in early voting, that could be an issue for restroom use.
If they're not that concerned.
That's what I'm saying, if something happens, and we all know how that can happen.
No.
Alright, um, alright, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Not to digress, but they have done very good work.
Oh, I know.
The water department, I just, you know, I'm always cautious, just like you, Doug, just in case, because I've been in that position.
Right.
And something happens, I just think it's important to be that day.
Yeah, I, if it affects a precinct, I'd rather it be Monday, or Tuesday.
What precinct is in that area?
I don't know.
I don't think there is any, that's one towards Middleway. I don't think, I don't think we're that far.
I was trying to think of...
Okay.
St. Leos?
St. Leos is up there, but it's, I think this is...
Well, we'll check, we'll just try to maybe get the address of where it's going to be affected.
Well, yeah, it may be such a thing that...
Good morning, Mr. Hess. You have, you have a little bit of exonerations and one consolidation, right?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning, sir.
We have one, well, personal property office error, not necessarily have two. And the fund, the evidence leased should have been performed and directed in the key of the area. Total of three hundred forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
Need a motion on the two personal tax exonerations due to officer error?
Second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. You have one real estate tax exoneration due to officer error?
Yes, I do. One real estate officer error exoneration. We had split on this, it was rental, part of it was a rental, and it didn't take it off, so that's frank. Tax class, six hundred and twenty dollars.
Need a motion on the one real estate tax exoneration due to officer error?
So moved.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. An application for consolidation?
I do. The name of the speaker, uh, Northern District, had three parcels. Act Fifteen E, parcel three, parcel two point one, and parcel four. You put it together so that you can get a point taken.
Hmm, have a...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
That's alright.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Board meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. The only meeting I had was Brooklyn County Public Service Water District. They had a discussion on the revised Water Service Termination Agreement. Because involves the water, sewer, and stormwater district. Particularly the people that have water in sewer. Um, discussion actually centered around those who object to the stormwater fee and wouldn't pay it. And they said that the sewer bill, the billing that they get is prorated. So if you don't pay your stormwater, it goes off the water, sewer, and stormwater. And you can still have your service cut off if you don't pay it.
Right.
So that was adopted, plus the combined billing agreement for our sewer and stormwater. Uh, they had a contract with Hays and Sawyer for work on Bumper Hill Treatment Plant. And we're also going to install emergency generators at the river plant. It would include secondary power source to the river plant, two to nine hundred thousand dollars. So the engineering cost is seventy-nine thousand. Uh, they have... The BB and T, or Truist Bank, uh, they're going to do a ten million, ten million dollar bond anticipation note. Uh, they approved Rattle Creek Phase Five. And I thought I had something on, and the first quarter review of money was right on. And the Creeper Spring continues to sustain a production rate of fourteen hundred and fifty gallons per minute. And they continue to take six hundred gallons a minute, twenty-four hours a day from the city. And Woods is starting to develop a water problem at their, system probably leaks so much, they're pumping full time to get water at the woods. And Woods people are notified, please conserve water use because they're pumping at capacity.
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say, too. You know, typically, it used to be that we would have storage capacity in our towers. But right now, with the volume of water that's being used, we're, that's not necessarily a hundred percent all the time. So, so now, now would probably be more important of having the generators at the plant more than ever.
Yeah.
Because we got a plant pumped more than, more than we ever have.
But that's really second cost of a million bucks.
And they've already checked with the power company, make sure they couldn't feed from another substation?
Um, I'm sure they have.
Because, I mean, there's different prop, different areas that they can feed from one, two, or three different substations, and just a switch of, flick of the switch? Yeah, yeah. So, alright, Ms. Moss?
Uh, last week I had a whole lot of things, and this week I didn't have anything, so I'm going to finish up from last week. Uh, on Parkson Rack, one of the things they have established is that they have an area and a barn that they can put up counters and, and three holes sink and things of that nature. So that they can have food established there for the weddings and things. Oh, yeah. They've, it's already, that's, that's what I said, that was, that was done. Um, and it says that all the, October of two thousand twenty-one, they're already scheduled full for the weddings. It happened to be, the Roundhouse is scheduled full for weddings for October of twenty-one. I don't know what's going on, but both, but both facilities are one hundred percent scheduled, uh, for weddings.
So when they going to start all the kitchen?
And whatever it is, they've, it's been approved. So food permitted barn has been established.
Approved, approved for permitting.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been approved. Um, then, um, the day of caring, uh, came to Warner Memorial Park and Ambrose Park, uh, in early September. And did a day of weeding, which, when you round all the flowers and things that are at the Ambrose and also Warner Memorial Park with the bushes, things that can be trimmed and cleaned up. So a very good day and very thankful out to the Valley Health, which was part of the cleanup crew. Uh, they're going to sell all the old equipment off, their hockey balls, the skate park obstacles that have been in storage since, uh, they were no longer used because they got new equipment put out by the, the skating, uh, professional skating group. And then, uh, no one wanted, the state park, excuse me, the skate park, skate park, not state park, skate park facilities, uh, no, it wasn't being used, so it's going to be sold.
You talking about capitals?
Yeah, I don't know what you're calling the crazy wards that you go up the ramps and things of that nature, skate park.
Oh, okay.
So all that's for sale. Um, then, um, the MPO, the route line, um, bypass, they're doing an extensive look at that. Um, and there're supposed to be more updates to the MPO. The big issue is that with five twenty-two, it being funded as Governor Justice did, uh, then this is putting more of a possibility of route mine in White. So this is in that area, so I...
That's fifty-nine million dollars.
Yes.
Five twenty-two.
Right, so I can imagine what would be from there to, to Brooklyn County. So that's, that's on the table. And then I have a gentleman named Jerome Perkland, who works with the National Park Service, working on his master's degree. And he's going to take the blacksmith shop and do, uh, document, documents that explain how the forges, the ovens, the handle stands. And all of those are completely handled, and it'll be a proper display done, just like the National Park Service. So we're, we're very much enthused about that opportunity. Um, furthermore, on the Roundhouse, we haven't gotten, they're working in design to find out what's the deal with the pole stations and the, uh, the hearing impaired, whatever that noise is, I can't think what you call it, um, for the bathrooms. So that's still in process, we haven't got past that yet.
So is the five twenty-two a state grant for, to do that, or is that a federal, was that a federal bill?
I think it was a match done by Governor Justice with the federal money, the money that came into the...
Right, with the federal bill grant.
Yeah. But they, they got the money, that was done two weeks ago, so this is putting more pressure on it. So environmentally, uh, the Back Creek Valley, excuse me, the Back Creek Stream, environmental protection needs to be really heavily looked at. Uh, and there's a lot of other things with some of the streams going up the road, Tillman, Tillington and all this other. Uh, so that's a lot of questions. Of course, we'll be quite medium looking from the highways and seventeenth, and I'll have that material with me at that point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Right now, we have a bid opening for RFP, mobile tech, uh, security cameras.
As the council is aware, um, the Work One Five Twenty South Rowley Street, um, retrofitting that building for the Day Report Center moves forward. All the internal framing has been completed. Gary has been working with the contractor, and ordering, and has received a lot of the cabling that is needed for that building. Um, this RFP is actually for sixty, um, robotic security cameras needed for the, the Day Report Center. Um, part of, yes, sir, part of that project. Um, we did distribute it to a number of vendors. Uh, we did advertise in the Mark for Journal, you have a certification publication in your file. It was advertised on October ninth, twenty twenty. Um, this is not a sole source bid. Uh, we had anticipated, um, quite a bit of activity. Uh, the closing date was yesterday at four o'clock, and we only received one bid, which I mean, surprised us. Gary, anything to that?
Is there any grants for that at all?
No, this is all bond funded.
Okay.
So the bids are, excuse me, the specs were standard, uh, to the, the specific cameras that we use. Uh, we actually received one via email, and I replied weeks ago and said, "Need that mailed in formally." And they didn't even respond, it's unwatchable. Typically get a really good response, and no idea, probably haven't, we'll go here and back and if it's in line.
The video for the cameras?
It's just cameras. It's just the physical cameras. And the camera, director image goes through what? It, it stores in our, in our environment, where all of our videos are stored, we probably have a thousand cameras around our campuses. So this is just a sixty edition.
And you'd be surprised how often access to the short term of cameras, particularly when it comes to a slip trick fall incident in the forty-five, all of that is still... It takes them themselves pretty gradually.
Alright, the price is coming from Document Solutions out of Williamsburg, Maryland. Uh, total bid price is thirty-seven thousand twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents. Thirty-seven twenty, thirty-seven thousand twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents.
How many cameras?
Sixty, right at sixty. Um, we use in many instances, and we use what's called hemispherical lens. So essentially, one camera can do this whole thing, that's why there's so little. Seven instances, it would be twice, three times many cameras.
You divide it into sectors.
I've seen everything. You do, there, yeah, but they, I don't know if it's not one, you, you don't even see them, they, they look like smoke at every, they said they're, that's another reason. You don't feel like you're in a prison, they're all over the floor.
It's not one of those bones.
No, it, there's not an addition, but they recess into the ceiling with just literally a little paint, I see the whole room.
Is that the budget?
It's real close to where I think they do.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Mr. Vice President, board meeting report.
Um, I didn't have any meetings, I do have, um, we do have a, um, development, already had a strategic planning, uh, tomorrow, so. We'll see where their thoughts are tomorrow.
Mr. Whitaker?
No meetings.
Uh, had one meeting at the Amblin Storey, was unable to attend, so, um, alright. Mr. Davis, you want to do state budget revision number five, Fund Zero Zero One?
Mr. President, do you have any support for this report?
I have.
I do.
I have.
Alright, good, Ms. Moss?
Uh, Mr. President, I called Mr. Kemp on the phone, and we had talked about it with the Roundhouse, and he is thrilled if, if he could be appointed to the Roundhouse Authority, and I will appoint the Roundhouse Authority.
We can make the motion, right?
I'm making the motion, appointing him. I'll second it.
Alright, motion been made, second, any discussion?
Is this a new position, replacement?
It's just, it's a poll for your jobs, because I got three elements.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, any other appointments? Alright, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir, you have in your package before you, um, state budget revision number five to the general fund. Um, since you last did state budget revision number four, we've received twenty-three checks and ACHs. Um, rarely of note, we've received disbursements totaling seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars uh, as part of CARE Act reimbursements. Um, again, our grant writers have been very, very busy, um, applying that need for reimbursement for CAREs. Um, we're doing some things with the State's Attorney's Office, some additional things through Ida. Um, have been working with some of the outside agencies on grants, so we do have a very, very active and productive grants department. Um, I'm recommending of the total nine hundred and ninety-six thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh, two hundred and thirty-one dollars of that goes back into information technology for supplies, materials expended for services that they've provided to the, to outside agencies. Um, I had authorized an abundance of overtime for our permits department, um, with the implementation of LAMA. Um, their overtime budget currently has a deficit, it's less than ten thousand dollars. But it's all been overtime that Brian and I have discussed and I have approved. So I'm asking that you put twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, into their overtime budget, which will, should be more than enough to carry them through, um, this fiscal year. Uh, add four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to your contingency account. Um, emergency services, we did receive, uh, safer grant reimbursement for vapor heights in the amount of thirty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Um, you can see I'm proposing that that be distributed back into emergency services, um, through, um, salaries, FICA, and PERS. Uh, allocate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to your capital outlay vehicles account. Um, we are purchasing, as you know, some vehicles outright. Um, the council authorized the purchase of, um, a pickup truck for community service, which we will be taking delivery of next, middle, next week. Um, we've approved that out of contingency. Um, we're also, uh, I will be proposing that we purchase outright, uh, a vehicle sometime this morning for our rapid response team through, uh... for our rapid response team through Recovery Resources Center, which will be leased back to the health department. And then finally, I'm recommending that we put an additional two hundred seven thousand seven hundred five dollars in your capital account for buildings and grounds to be reserved for future buildings and grounds projects.
All right, anybody have any questions? Need a motion to approve the state budget revision number five, one, zero, zero, one.
Some move.
All right, motion made, second, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye? Anyone opposed, the motion carries, bid recommendation, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, last Thursday, we opened bids for compact SUV. Again, for the health department, recovery services, quick response team, we received two bids, one from Whiteside of St. Clairsville, Ohio, for a twenty-twenty Chevy Trax LS in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred fifteen dollars. And then a bid from Bob Robinson Chevrolet for a twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet Trax in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars. We have been in touch with both dealerships. The twenty-twenty Chevrolet Trax is in stock and to be delivered next week. If the council approves it today, it would actually be delivered with the vehicle for community service. The twenty-twenty-one Chevrolet Trax would have to be ordered and would have to be put in line on the assembly, and we don't know when that would be available. Because. We, we have rented a vehicle from one of the local auto dealerships. So we would like to be able to return that and have our own, our own credit.
So you're saying that twenty-twenty is available, twenty-twenty-one will be a lot?
Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty, we can have next week, next Tuesday, Wednesday, twenty-twenty-one, we have no idea.
That's kind of messed up, isn't it?
It is. So we are recommending that we, that the council award the bid to Whiteside of St. Clair. That submitted the lowest bid of twenty-one thousand two hundred fifteen dollars. Again, because the vehicle is in stock, we can have that next week.
All right, after you, a motion?
Motion to approve the administrator's recommendation.
Motion made, second, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye? Anyone opposed, the motion carries, and holiday schedule?
Yes, sir, you will find in your packet the proposed twenty-twenty-one holiday schedule, which matches up with the state of West Virginia. Just a couple of things that are a little different this year, of course, we don't have election day, so that will make a difference. Also, Christmas Day and New Year's Day next year. Christmas Day of twenty-twenty-one and New Year's Day of twenty-twenty-two falls on Saturday. So you'll see that instead of a half a day on Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve will actually, Christmas Day will actually be observed on Friday, the twenty-fourth, and New Year's Day will be observed on Friday, December thirty-first. So not only are we reducing the holiday schedule by the two election days, but we're also knocking off two half-days, which we would normally observe for New Year's Eve and Christmas Eve.
All right, need a motion on the holidays?
I'm the second.
Motion made, second, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye? Anyone opposed, the motion carries, thank you. Ms. Hamilton, executive director of the Development Authority, you have some resolutions for us, and an update?
And a congratulations to Sandy on her one of suspension.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me here this morning. I don't know if you want to start the resolutions or updates, it's your pleasure.
Your pleasure.
Okay, I'm going to start with updates then, and explain a little bit about what I just handed to you. I was trying to think, what I typically do is come in and tell you all the great things that are happening, and I could do that again, and will. But I, I thought it might be helpful if I included some monthly reports for myself and my staff. They go to our board of directors, or Dan sees it monthly, but I thought, you know, maybe it would be good if you saw just in a single piece of paper for myself and both my staff people, you know, some of the things we do on a monthly basis. So you would maybe have a little broader scope and idea of the work that goes on day to day with the Development Authority. And, you know, not ironically, but pretty typically, the new projects I have listed in my monthly report, we already had another one that's been added since this report, and we've already been shortlisted on it, Project lava. So that's, that's not a bad thing to report, that we're currently looking at a minimum of five new manufacturing facilities coming to Berkeley County. So hopefully that'll be helpful, and that'll be just some additional information you'll have that, not only for myself, but I thought it was important too, that you can see that, not only are we bringing new manufacturing businesses into the community, but you can see my economic resource coordinator, Denver Smith, has continually worked with the existing businesses to ensure that, you know, we don't want to bring new business at, at the sake of losing our existing businesses and not contributing to their growth and their retention. And I certainly don't want to cause a problem with them in regard to workforce. So we're being very strategic about diversifying the types of businesses that we're bringing in. And I feel really grateful that we're able to do that, that we're in a position where we can kind of take and choose and recruit businesses that are going to complement the county and not cause any undue stress on the businesses we have here, particularly from a workforce standpoint, and certainly infrastructure as well. And I also wanted you to see that our administrative services coordinator, the work that's done in regard to our website and our social media presence on a day-to-day basis. So along that lines, you've also got included there just a few brief pages that tell you how you can find us as far as our website. One of the tools that we use on our website that, you know, we're really trying to market that maybe isn't as well-known as it should be, is that if you have a commercial or industrial property in Berkeley County that's for lease or for sale, we list it on our website at no cost and we market it. Because, you know, my, my thought process is if it's in Berkeley County and it's commercial industrial, the ownership is just detailed. So we want to ensure that we're getting the right piece of property to the right businesses that need to come in or to expand. So there's some people in the area that I don't think they're aware of that service, so we're trying to make sure that they know if they have a commercial or industrial property that we're happy to market. So that's on our website and as well as our social media presence. I don't think, I've talked with you since we created a second Facebook page. Initially, this was in March, we thought it would be helpful to have a second page that would help connect resources to businesses. And my first thought was that it's going to be a COVID nineteen-related second Facebook page. And then the more I thought it over, I thought, you know, this is going to change the way businesses do business forever. So we don't want to restrict ourselves and make it a COVID nineteen-type page. We want to make a page where we're able to really help businesses connect with the resources they need. Because I still firmly believe we have all the resources businesses need for the most part, it's just a matter of making sure they're aware of it. So we have a second Facebook page that's connecting businesses to resources, and that's picking up some speed as well. And then the last thing I have in the folder I gave you was just information regarding one of the longest standing programs in the state, probably the only one at the time, the Eastern Panhandle Entrepreneur Forum. So it's Berkeley County's turn to host, and of course, we're not, we're going to host, we're not going to let a little thing about, you know, maybe not being able to meet in person change that. So we're going to have a Zoom meeting link next Thursday night from five to six-thirty. We've asked some local businesses, such as Westwood Charm Boutique, Black Draft, I shouldn't have started, now I'm not going to remember them all. But we, we just asked some small businesses that just adjusted their thinking and were able to do things to survive throughout this last few months. Not only just existed the thrive, particularly, you know, Black Draft with the antiseptic that they've been able to do, and, and Westwood Charm just went completely from being a box to doing an online presence and thriving. So we're going to have them on the Zoom meeting, talking with people and answering questions and explaining what they did to overcome the opportunity, to use the opportunities that are available.
Right, and try to help the other.
A huge, a huge amount of restaurants have, have totally rethought their whole, their whole clientele, how they're going to serve and all that, by doing cater, or to-gos and, and curbside pickup and all that.
Yes, absolutely. I had one restaurant tell me recently, that, you know, you're, you're doordashing us enough, you know, we've got your number on speed dial, just call us and tell us what you want, avoid those fees and we'll take care of it. So, yeah, there's, you know, there's a way to make it happen, but I think it's only the approach, and again, you know, attitude. So we thought, what better time to have a panel of people that are doing it, talk with people that maybe need some guidance and some direction, and maybe just some hope that, you know, if it's not a hopeless situation, it's a situation you can turn around, you just have to move in that direction, not back down. So I'm going to take a breath, there's a lot going on. We, like I said, we were just shortlisting on Project lava two days ago, and that brings us up to six manufacturing facilities that will be brand-new to the area. That, in each case, there's nothing duplicated. And so what we've tried to do is look at a couple of different things, you know, what don't we currently have in Berkeley County as far as business that would be productive to have here and would help the local citizens? And two, what are people leaving Berkeley County, what jobs are they leaving the county for? And can we get those jobs here so that they have a choice to stay here and do the jobs in the county they live in? So those are the kind of things that, you know, we're very strategically, and by we, you know, I keep looking at Dan because my board of directors is very progressive and supportive, that that's exactly the direction we need to take to go after things that aren't here and things that will benefit the citizens of Berkeley County, so, thank you.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Absolutely, we've got a full day tomorrow. So along that line, we have our strategic planning session with the board of directors tomorrow morning, and I'm excited to have that, have that happen. And I'm excited that the board is open to constantly looking at, what are we doing, where are we going to go, how are we going to get there? And, you know, things in the economic development world are changing so quickly and happening so fast that, you know, five, ten-year plan makes no sense, because it's obsolete almost as soon as we put it in place. So we're going to have a meeting in the morning, and we're going to talk about, you know, our direction and what we're going to do to get there, or so. You know, we're going to take a breath and maybe have a little lunch, I haven't figured out yet if lunch is in the cards tomorrow, but then we have a great, we're going to have a little kickoff meeting with a brand-new business that's coming to Berkeley County.
Sandy, on these new projects, the yellow ones that are ones that are up close to developing, and the others are just swirling in the wind?
Well, they're not swirling in the wind, because if they're swirling in the wind, I don't have my own paper.
Okay.
But the highlighted ones are the ones that I think have the most probability that we're going to see them to the end. The others are, they're still in the earlier stages of site selection, and in some cases, they have already selected Berkeley County, but they're working through potentially financing or just some other things, shareholders, that type of thing, so.
What's the number one issue that, anyone, or?
Number one issue?
Opportunity, opportunity, Jim, number one opportunity?
Number one? Well, I mean, certainly the logistics of the, you know, the I in one quarter, that never hurts. But I think above that, I think that there's even some businesses that are, you know, they would find a way to work around that particular area. But what, what is most conducive is our skilled workforce and our educational facilities here. I mean, I couldn't have better partners than Blue Ridge Community Technical College and James Robinson Technical Institute, Berkeley County Schools.
That's the kind of stuff that you bring up to the town of Pennsylvania and Virginia and Maryland and all those places?
Yeah, you know, they don't stand a chance, the others.
The other thing is, you bring the other things in too, I mean, when you, what was it, one of the meetings you were talking about, but then one day you had, what, thirty people there to, to talk about what we could offer, how we can help? I don't know if you can do that, I swear.
Well, I think they probably could, but they don't for whatever reason. Yeah, I hear that repeatedly, and we're going to do that tomorrow afternoon. And, and yes, a business that came in town yesterday afternoon, did its final lessons on things this morning, said to me, you know, we, we went to ten or twelve major markets across the country and across the world, and we've never been in a place before where you got all the players in front of us within twenty-four hours, and we were able to directly have a conversation with someone. And I think that's probably a sad commentary on maybe society in general, but it's not a commentary on what occurs in Berkeley County.
On, on the potential customers coming to Berkeley County, and the yellow versus the non-yellow ones, are they an absolute new company, or are they ancillaries from already established industry around the country?
These are all absolutely middle, for instance, just for an example. And I had a message late last night from this particular CEO that said, it might only work best for me to meet you on a Saturday, because I'm going to come there and back down and count one day. Is that possible? I said, yeah, just give me what time it's Saturday, I'm available from six AM till five, I forget what time I'm getting. But anyway, Project Adams, this is a company that has, they've been in business about twenty-five years. They've experienced such growth, and they manufacture, but nothing like we have here. They've experienced so much growth that they build a new facility every year, account for the last twenty-five years. So I got the call, we talked, I told him what we had here, I sent him some information. He's going to be my Saturday visit, and he said, okay, we're just going to build our twenty-sixth facility in Berkeley County in twenty-twenty-one. And I said, bring it on, brand-new.
Jim, was your question, was your question, are these new companies that are forming, or are they?
I meant as forming, not as, I know they're new in Berkeley County, but how many new companies are?
They're well-established.
Well-established.
I think all of these are, aren't they?
Yes, they are.
That's what I was wondering, I figured that they, for somebody to come up with something new, to want to come to Berkeley County, that's, I mean, that would be remarkable, but I'm glad to see that these are already established companies that sort of choose to see what the industry is doing here and giving us legitimate.
Well, and to go along with, with Jim's statement earlier, I'm almost embarrassed to say this, but because it benefits Berkeley County, I'm not embarrassed to say that the pandemic has been a benefit to us because of that situation with, you know, large numbers of people. Everybody's wanting to get out of largely populated areas, but they don't want to go somewhere that's so rural that they don't have connectivity, and that they don't have infrastructure, and that they don't have a transportation logistic system. So, I mean, we look greater than anybody, because, wow, okay, we can be at one of three major airports in an hour and a half, but we're not in the midst of a few million people. So I have seen our prospect activity triple since March.
Yeah, and, and the crazy thing about that is, is the mark train could even play a big role in that.
Absolutely will.
You know?
They're stunned to find out we have it here. You know, I include it, and I make sure that they're aware that that, there's that real rule in there. What? You have, absolutely.
And, and they're able, you know, if they want the lifestyle of the big city, they can catch a mark train, go for a day and come right back.
Right.
Or just the opposite. From deep recording and interwoven and.
Yeah.
Touch on what you just said about the mark train, maybe nice to, to start a reverse instead of everybody leaving here, going to the city, bring the city back to here.
Become a destination. And I, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for, for Berkeley, particularly, you know, with this, with this, great mix happening in Roundhouse and things that are happening, you know, all around the county, and so that's, that's probably that I have in short-term versus long-term.
One of the things my wife said when I was running one of my campaigns was, this needs to be a place to come, not a place to leave.
Did you use that in your campaign?
I did, I did, I see it's actually being used in other. I see it's actually being used in other campaigns right now, which is good.
And they have to come soon enough to get registered so that they can vote. I just heard on my way in, there was a two-hour wait. I said, "I'm not coming to vote today, I'm coming to be before the county council." And he said, "We're going ahead." And I thought, how wonderful that it's pouring down rain and there's a two-hour wait to vote. I think that's wonderful.
And they were standing out in the rain when I got here.
There's still a few in the rain, most of them are in the building now.
It's crazy.
I think that's wonderful.
I think it's great that they're.
Yeah, it's a little deceiving if you drive by and see there's no line down around the corner.
But you get in and every hallway is full of people that are patiently waiting to exercise their rights of interest, which is wonderful.
We just got told by Daryl Schull that probably early voting will probably surpass the voting that we would have in the, you know, last.
Actually, actually what he said is, "We've already surpassed any other year right now." And we'll be.
Total early voting, for sure, of any presidential race. But I look for the number, I bet you our voter turnout will be up to 40 some percent this, because.
Seventy-four, forty-seven so far, early voting.
And that's just your own person, that's not absentee ballots.
Correct, absentee, seventy-five so.
Seventy-five, twenty-two.
That's almost equal.
Cast and return, and then there was 10,144, that's any question.
And before early voting is over, there'll probably be about 18,000 people that had already voted in Berkeley County on the age tax, making some of the president voters. That's huge, it's over 20%.
20%.
So, there's a reason. All right. Yep, thank you, Sandy, and thanks for all the good work, and you got a couple resolutions as well?
Yes, so before I get to resolutions, anybody have questions about the update? I have to tell you, it's always a standard one, and it always brings me a lot of comfort to be able to say to particularly the new prospects. I have a Berkeley County Council who is pro-business and who is supportive and assisting you in any way possible to bring you to Berkeley County, to help the citizens. And to be able to say that is huge. So I do want to say thank you for that, and this is probably, not probably, I guess this is the last time I'm gonna be with a councilperson here that way in this position, but certainly look forward to continuing to work with you one or more, and thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely, and look forward to continuing to help out, what we can do, you know. One of the, and one of the things that, when you were talking about the services and reason why people, one of the things that we hear all the time is that how nice it is to locate and have such a urgency to help through our planning and engineering department to forward these projects and get them, get them operational.
Well, any agency, I'm chair of the Transit Authority, the Health Department, any agency we're standing ready.
I think the biggest thing 10 years ago, Sandy, you know, most governments aren't pro-business and they act like, and they act like they're the only business there and you gotta deal with them whether you like it or not. We wanted to make sure that all of our staff, this council understood that these people have a choice. They can either stop and live in Berkeley County or do business in Berkeley County or go somewhere else. And that's how everybody looks at it. It's an opportunity that someone's given us. It's not the other way around.
And Mr. President, I'm so thankful that where we started, it took a while to get our building and planning mission moving forward, but that was significant, was the turnaround time in projects.
Oh, absolutely. You know, and the way that we conduct business here from the standpoint of, you tell us when you want to be operational, and we're gonna work the top line backwards to accommodate you. And, you know, I frequently get asked, well, you know, what are the incentives? What are you doing? What have you? And I said, "Well, you know, there's a couple of things, and I always, you know, if there's anything that irritates me, very few things do, but if there's anything that irritates me, it's when I hear criticism about the pilot or incentives." Because I think it's so misunderstood. You know, first of all, I don't just throw things out and say, "Come here, come here, let me give you this, let me give you that." No, I wait to find out what is needed. And sometimes nothing's needed, other than they just want to be here and they need us to work with them to make it happen, and that's fine. Sometimes they do need some assistance in the early years of bringing on a huge business here with an $8 billion of investments. But we never give anything in Berkeley County that we don't have something in return. It's a partnership. So when people say, "Oh, well, you don't help this or you don't help that," and I say, "Well, let's work together, we can, what do you need and what can you give us so that we can help offset to assist you?" So, you know, sometimes I think that's looked at as so black and white and there's such a misunderstanding that, "Oh, you just threw a bunch of money at this company." No, we didn't, but we offered them this and it's conditional. You know, they have to create this number of jobs, and if they don't, they don't get that. So I'm constantly, just a little irritated sometimes at misunderstanding of that. So I try to make sure that people do understand that, you know, we're not giving anything away. There's conditions with everything that we're able to do to assist businesses. If they don't meet the conditions, then they don't get the incentive.
You're defending, you're not.
Yeah, we'll help anybody, but, you know, sometimes I think people don't ask. It's kind of like real estate, one of one, ask for the sale. If there's something you need, tell me what it is, and if there's a way we can accommodate it, we'll do our best to do that if you meet your obligations. But, anyway, I'll go without saying, and if there's nothing else, I do have two resolutions I don't want for you to have on your agenda. You know, I just happened to glance, peripheral vision here. Mr. Davis has been an incredible assistance to me. I don't want to be here to update you and not at least speak about how wonderful he is in regard to everything he does, from particularly I've had, I've had a situation recently, delivered immediately, so, thank you. So I am glad I glanced at the clock to see you just.
It's special to us too, Sandy.
I have a feeling, anyway, um, yeah, I have.
I know you're sincere.
We're gonna hesitate all day now.
And before Anthony, I think I can come up after five minutes and rep him before I need to throw him on a phone call, but thank you. I do have two resolutions, pretty simple, but there's a resolution for your support of the LED grant, Local Economic Development Grant. That is money that the state sets aside in their budget yearly. We have to apply for it to receive it, and then we match it and we use it for economic development in the county, so there's a resolution.
One on your podium, if you want to read it.
Okay. You want me to read the whole?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Berkeley County Council Resolution of Participation with the Local Economic Development Grant Program, or the LED Grant. Whereas the governing body of Berkeley County is interested in the economic well-being of its citizenry and the community at large, and whereas the governing body is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community to promote economic development, and whereas the governing body of Berkeley County continues to support the Berkeley County Development Authority for their efforts to grow our economy, and whereas the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce, the West Virginia Economic Development Council, and the Governor's Office of Community Industrial Development continue to offer financial support that's designed to help West Virginia communities become better prepared for industrial and related economic development. Now therefore be it resolved by the Berkeley County Council that our community wishes to participate in the Local Economic Development Grant Program, LED Grant, and that the leadership of this community fully recognizes this program, fully realizes this program requires dedicated effort, and be it further resolved that by receiving these monies, we are pledging our ongoing efforts to support and grow our business community, and be it further resolved that the grant monies require the existence of a local economic development organization, and the Berkeley County Council designates the Berkeley County Development Authority as representing our community for the purpose of participation in this grant program. This resolution's in full effect on its adoption this, hopefully, Friday, day of October, 2020.
Okay, you need a motion to adopt the resolution?
Sunday. Sorry.
That'll be quicker.
Yeah.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries, and you have another application or resolution?
Yes, this is a resolution for application for Industrial Access Road or the IAR Grant. This is money that's, again, allotted on a, it's not a calendar year, on a fiscal year for counties to utilize for industrial access roads, just as the title says. So it's whereas the governing body of Berkeley County is interested in the economic well-being of its citizenry and community at large, and whereas the governing body is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community to promote economic development, and whereas the governing body of Berkeley County continues to support the Berkeley County Development Authority for their efforts to grow our economy, and whereas the West Virginia Department of Commerce, the West Virginia Economic Development Council, and the Governor's Office of Community Industrial Development continue to offer financial support that's designed to help West Virginia communities become better prepared for industrial and related economic development. Now therefore be it resolved by the Berkeley County Council that our community wishes to participate in the Industrial Access Road Grant Program, IAR Grant, and that the leadership of this community fully realizes this program requires dedicated effort, and be it further resolved that by receiving these monies, we're pledging our ongoing efforts to support and grow our business community, and be it further resolved that the grant monies require the existence of a local economic development organization, and this governing body designates the Berkeley County Development Authority as representing our community for the purpose of participation in this grant program. This resolution's in full effect on its adoption of 29th day of October, 2020.
Okay, you need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? If not, all favors say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Good update.
Thank you.
I like the format. All right, I think that concludes everything we got, other than items from the public. Any items from the public?
Not from the public, but just a question. What do you think our tax base would be on vertical rental property if we didn't have the industry to help support that economy and the world?
Well, we say it all the time, Jim, we know in business, the day that we stop growing is the day we start dying, you know, and look at the rest of the state.
I think we've seen it, I think we've seen when, you know, when we had Corning and GM and those bigger plants start closing up. I think we've seen a drop in our housing values, in our jobs, and those type of things. And I think, you know, it started to turn around. As soon as that was noticed, it started to, you know, started to go. But it's gained major, major traction in the last 10 years.
I agree.
15 years maybe.
All right, I guess we'll recess until 1:00, which we'll reconvene at the Airport Authority, um, yeah, Airport Boardroom.
I think we're going to be, I think we're still going to be the same.
Same spot.
Not in the same spot, but the same parking area where I think we're gonna locate where the King Air is at, which is the hangar that's right beside the terminal building.
Mr. President, we'll get lunch.
Okay, out there. Okay, all right, sounds good, so in the meantime, we'll be out for lunch. All right. Resess until, till then.
Ooh, I heard that, that sounds like me.
That's a good thing. It's a great thing. That means you've beaten the alternative.